Let us bow down our heads and feel the presence of the Lord. Let us pray in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly and loving Father, we thank you for giving us this wonderful day. Lord, thank you for the gift of life that you have given us. Lord, bless each and every one of us as we start our session today. We continue to guide, bless, and protect each and every one of us, especially our Presiding Officer. Give us the courage, give us the wisdom, and give us the strength for us to continue the task that you've given us. Lord, protect our family, protect our loved ones, and shower us with your blessings. Protect us with your holy blood. Lord, we know that without you, we can do nothing, for you are our Lord and our God and the source of all good things. We entrust everything to you. Be sweet and pray in the mighty name of Jesus. Your Son. Amen.
My dear fellow councilors, kindly raise your right hand and ask together with the side the councilor's creed. I am a Philippine Consular mandated by law to enact measures and ordinances that are down to the general welfare of my constituents in their pursuit for peace and happiness. I believe in public service of myself as the guiding principle of my official act, and I sustain the pathways of local decisions. May the Almighty guide my mind and heart, and I shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people.
Okay, so Madam Secretary, let's have a roll call.
Honorable Arnold Armada, Honorable Carlo Apia Do, Honorable Arjan K. Palasiggi, Honorable Moises Dolar, Honorable Ryan Dumaran, Honorable Darlene Lama, Honorable Maria Generalin Mihya, Honorable Marie Blight Cartuhanogaringo, Honorable Marvin Dalanon, Honorable Jofe Dorana, Honorable Valjean Fuscablo. Honorable Presiding Officer, so at this moment there are seven, eight members are present and three members are absent. So those absent are Honorable Maria Generalin Mihya, Honorable Marie Blight Cartuhanogaringo, and Honorable Jofe Dorana. So as regards Honorable Marie Blight Cartuhanogaringo, it was, I was informed that she will be absent in today's session, Your Honor. As regards Honorable Maria Generalin Mihya and Honorable Jofe Dorana, Your Honor, there was no information as regards the reason why they are not yet around, Your Honor.
Okay, so with eight members, including the Chair present, the quorum is declared. Let's proceed.
So we are now on the reading and consideration of the minutes of the previous session. We have the minutes of March 3, 2025.
So let's go over and consider the minutes of our regular session held on March 3. Do may session ta before March 3?
Yes, Your Honor, there are two minutes to be considered. The February.
February 24, okay.
February 24, 2025, and the March 3, 2025 minutes, Your Honor.
Okay, so let's go over the minutes of our session held on February 24, 2025. Any correction so far? Honorable Moises Dolar is recognized.
Mr. Chair, if there is no correction or comment about the previous minutes dated February 24, 2025, I move for its adoption.
Okay, so the minutes of our regular session held on February 24, 2025 is hereby adopted. So now, let's consider the minutes of our regular session held on March 3, 2025. Thank you, thank you. Any correction so far? Honorable Carlo Apia Do is recognized.
Mr. Chair, if there's no correction on our minutes dated March 3, 2025, I move for its adoption.
Okay, so the minutes of our regular session held on March 3, 2025, the same is adopted. Next order of business, Madam Secretary.
So, Your Honor, we are now on the privilege hour.
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Moises Dolar.
Good morning, everyone. So, Mr. Chair, I would like to greet all women for the International Women's Month, for this month, March. So, and also may I ask Mr. Chair if ano ang mga activities nga nahimo natin para sa aton ng kababaihan, din sa aton ba nasa isulan?
So for the, I did not receive any program of activities or anything. May we know from our secretary if there are communications received in connection with Women's Month celebration?
So, Your Honor, as part of our order business and the first reading, Your Honor, item number three. We have this memorandum order from the Office of the Municipal Mayor to all officials and employees to wear any shade of pink t-shirt or blouse every Wednesday for the entire month of March to show our support for the various advocacies and endeavors sought for women empowerment under active participation in the community.
Sige, we'll take that up, Honorable Dolar, when the item will be read on first reading. So far, that's the only memorandum or announcement that we receive, Madam Secretary?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, there is no information as to when the municipality will celebrate the Women's Month celebration?
We have not yet received, Your Honor, but I guess the Office of the MSWDO is preparing for the culminating activities. I guess, I don't know if when will be the schedule, Your Honor.
Honorable Dolar, would you like to pursue your query about the Women's Month celebration? Okay, if you want to pursue, then we'll request the presence of Madam Aileen Lugtugan.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have a budget on it.
She is around also, okay? So may we request our secretariat to request the presence of Ma'am Aileen in connection with the Women's Month celebration? Okay, so in the meantime, let's proceed to other matters on privilege. If there's none, then let's proceed, Madam Secretary.
So we are now on the first reading. First item is letter received from the Office of the Mayor dated February 27, 2025, addressed to the Vice Mayor, requesting for the urgent passing of resolution in connection with installation of 3250 KV8 transformer of the, at the new municipal hall to, with the Suelco or the Sultanco darat Electric Cooperative Incorporated, Your Honor.
Okay, in connection with that resolution, installation of
250 KV8 transformer.
Para sa new municipal hall?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, so we'll schedule this for second reading, but again, may we request our secretariat to call the presence of our municipal engineer to explain this, or his representative, atong-atong electrical engineer, or both of them can appear.
So item number two, advisory received from the DILG Province of Sultanco darat to all city municipal mayors through the city municipal local government operation officers concerned with the subject, the request for the passage of ordinances or ordinance prohibiting the sale and disposition of portion of ancestral domains.
Okay, refer this to the Committee on Laws.
Item number three, memorandum to all employees from the desk of the LCE with the subject, celebration of the National Women's Month. So as I have stated a while ago, Your Honor, this is in relation to the directive for all officials and employees to wear any shade of pink t-shirt or blouse every Wednesday in relation to the celebration of the Women's Month.
Okay, for information.
Item number four, the resolutions received from Barangay Kalawag 3. So we have four resolutions, Your Honor. First, we have resolution number 2025 dash seven, a resolution enacting barangay ordinance number one, series of 2025, imposing penalties on owners of stray animals within the barangay kalawag 3 area of responsibility.
Okay, refer this to the Committee on Laws.
Then, resolution number 2025 dash eight. This is resolution approving and enacting the barangay ordinance number two, series of 2025, the implementation of a one-way traffic scam from MGM Shopping Plaza to the mosque in Porok Tumamin, barangay kalawag 3, this municipality providing penalties for violation here and for other purposes.
It's a resolution, Madam Sec?
No, Your Honor.
Still an ordinance?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, so refer this to the Committee on Laws.
Another resolution, number 2025 dash nine, resolution approving and enacting the barangay ordinance number three, series of 2025, for the temporary closure of the road located at the boundary between Porok Sandroki and Porok Tumamin, Jomopa, or Friday prayer every Friday.
Okay, refer this to the Committee on Laws.
Then, resolution number 2025 dash 10, resolution adopting municipal ordinance number 2012-104 ISB, prohibiting the sale of cigarettes, liquor, and other intoxicating beverages to minors.
A resolution adopting our ordinance?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, so for information.
Then we have item number five, resolution number two dash 2025 of barangay Dan Suli.
Item five na.
Number five.
Item five, okay.
So this is resolution number two dash 2025 of barangay Dan Suli, approving the operation of a three-balls perahan and refreshment station during the 19th foundation anniversary of Porok 3 barangay Dan Suli.
Usually, we endorse this to the Office of the Mayor. So endorse to the Office of the
Local Chief Executive.
Well taken, Your Honor. Then, item number six, letter received from the DNR Mines and Geosciences Bureau, Regional Office Number 12, addressed to the Vice Mayor through the MPDC. So, with the cover letter, Your Honor, we, they are furnished, the office is furnishing a copy of the report entitled, Technical Report on the Groundwater Vulnerability Assessment of Alav Valley Watershed in the provinces of South Cotabato and Sultanco, the Philippines, prepared by the Hydrogeology and Environmental Geology Section. So this is signed by Efren Escaredo, the Regional Director of the DNR Region 12.
Anong request niya? Two?
Ah, Your Honor, they are only furnishing, the Office of the Regional Director is furnishing a copy of the report entitled, Technical Report on the Groundwater Vulnerability Assessment of Alav Valley Watershed in the provinces of South Cotabato and Sultanco, the Philippines, and this is prepared by the Hydrogeology and Environmental Geology Section of the DNR.
Okay, for information.
Item number eight. Hi, number seven. We have the endorsement letter dated March 3, 2025 from the Office of the Mayor forwarding to the Secretary to the SB, the letter of the DILG in relation to the Liga ng mga barangay congress.
Okay, for information.
And item number eight, the invitation letter from the DILG. This is in relation to the end-term assembly of the Philippine Counselors League. I think this is in Boracay, Aklan, Your Honor. Boracay, Aklan.
When, when?
On, for a while, June 2 to 4, 2025.
June?
June 2 to 4.
Okay, many, after election, for information.
So we have no more items on first reading, Your Honor. We'll proceed now to the committee reports. First, there are only one report, the Committee on Finance. The Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriations, and Ways and Means Report, Your Honor.
Okay. So, Honorable Carlapiado is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The subject is the committee report of the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means. Committee Report Number 2025 dash zero eight. This is with regard to, uh, the review of the, uh, barangay ordinance of, uh, barangay Kenram, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to the referred matter to this committee, a committee hearing was conducted last March 5, 2025, at 2 o'clock in the afternoon at the Sanggunyang Bayan Office, Isulang Sultan Kudarat. Present during the committee hearing were, uh, the Assistant Municipal Treasurer, Mrs. Nemia Villar, representing the, uh, Office of the Municipal Treasurer, the members of the Sanggunyang Barangay, or barangay Kenram, headed by Honorable Aracely Grosspe, and, uh, the members comprising the committee, this committee. Item, barangay ordinance number two, series of 2024 of barangay Kenram. Findings, the barangay government of Kenram submitted for review barangay ordinance number two, series of 2024 of barangay Kenram, entitled an ordinance amending the imposition of fees for barangay clearances, certifications, and other miscellaneous services in barangay Kenram, Isulang Sultan Kudarat. The barangay council of Kenram deemed it proper to update the current fees for barangay clearances, certifications, and other miscellaneous services to reflect the cost of administrative operations to ensure proper service delivery. There is also a need to standardize and streamline the process for the issuance of, uh, these documents, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to section 447a1, subparagraph I of, um, subparagraph 1 of Republic Act Number 7160, otherwise known as the Local Government, Local Government Code of 1991. This committee therefore finds that this said ordinance is within the scope of the prescribed powers of the Sanggunyang Barangay as provided for under section 152 of the Local Code, specifically providing for the scope of taxing powers of the barangay, Mr. Chair. Further, the committee finds that the tests of invalid ordinance are well established. Since for an ordinance to be valid, it must not only be within the corporate powers of the local government unit to enact and must be passed according to the procedure prescribed by law. It must also conform to the following substantive requirements, Mr. Chair. It must not contraband the constitution or any statute, must not be unfair or oppressive, must not be partial or discriminatory, must not prohibit but may regulate trade, must be general and consistent with public policy, and must not be unreasonable. Hence, the subject ordinance is not ultra vires nor prejudicial to public interest. It is the recommendation of the committee, Mr. Chair, to pass a resolution declaring barangay ordinance number two, series of 2024 of barangay Kenram, entitled an ordinance amending the imposition of fees for barangay clearances, certifications, and other miscellaneous, miscellaneous services in barangay Kenram, Isulang Sultan Kudarat, valid and consistent with law, subject to the compliance of all pertinent provisions of Republic Act 7160 or the Local Government Code of 1991. We further recommend, Mr. Chair, that this, uh, matter be deliberated on second reading in today's session. Respectfully submitted by the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means, Chairperson, yours truly, Committee Vice Chairperson, Honorable Moises Dolar, and, uh, Committee Secretary, Honorable Engineer Marvin El Delanon.
Okay, any comment, uh, on the report? There being, uh, there's none, Honorable, uh, Apiado?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the committee report number 2025 dash zero eight of the Committee on Finance.
Okay, so the committee report, uh, number 2025 zero eight of the Committee on, uh, Finance, Budget, Appropriations, and Ways and Means is hereby adopted, and the measure be calendared for second reading this session.
So, we have no more committee reports, Your Honor. We'll proceed now to the calendar of business on second reading. First, under, on second reading, Your Honor, is the, uh, is the proposed measure based on item number one of the first reading, which is the request for the urgent passing of resolution in relation to the, um, authority to enter into a MOWA between the LGU and the Sukelco, Your Honor, in connection with the 250 KV8, uh, transformer to be installed at the new municipal building.
Okay, any response from the engineering office?
So, Your Honor, per information, the municipal engineer, even though he was already requested to be present in today's session, Your Honor, in relation to this proposed measure, Your Honor, but according, according to him, uh, accordingly, uh, he could not attend the session because there was no permission from the Office of the Mayor for him to attend this session, Your Honor.
Okay. Honorable Apiado, you're raising your hand.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I, I was hoping that the municipal engineer should be present in today's session for us to be clarified as regard this, uh, MOWA.
Yeah, that's right.
Because we, we, during one, in, in one of our supplemental budgets, we allocated funds for the installation of, uh, any transformer. Uh, I, I have some questions to, uh, our municipal engineer, Mr. Chair, and hoping that he could attend.
So, any member who knows, uh, something about this MOWA, or could explain? There's none? Then, uh, let's table this, uh, resolution. So, this, uh, MOWA is tabled for next session. Next?
Next proposed measure on second reading is based on the committee report of the Committee on Finance, Budget, Appropriations, and Ways and Means.
Uh, yes, Honorable Apiado is recognized.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I would like to make a manifestation as regard the MOWA. Since the item is already tabled for our next session, can we write it? Can we make a letter addressed to the municipal engineer for him to be present in our next session?
Okay, and, uh, aside from the municipal engineer, who else, uh, would you like to request to be present? Would you like to question the appropriation on this? So that we can call our budget officer?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, including, uh, include in the request, uh, the municipal budget officer of Isulan. Okay, uh, please proceed now, Honorable Apiado.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for, uh, a resolution. Declaring barangay ordinance number two, series of 2024 of barangay Kenram, entitled an ordinance amending the imposition of fees for barangay clearances, certifications, and other miscellaneous services in barangay Kenram, Isulang Sultan Kudarat, valid and consistent with law, subject to the compliance of all pertinent provisions of RA 7160 or the Local Government Code of 1991.
Second. Okay. So, Honorable Apiado, the... This imposition of fees is for barangay clearances, certifications, ano, nag-increase sila?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
From? Pilang old rate niya?
Just for a while, Mr. Chair, I will get the copy of the ordinance of barangay Kenram. There are some, uh, entries in the barangay ordinance, like for example, for their clearances for, uh, um, securing barangay clearance for periyahan, installing a water refilling station, um, barangay certification for medical, in the agency, it's for free. May I request our staff, Mr. Chair, to flash the ordinance of barangay Kenram? Filing fee, someone per person, it's 300 pesos, from, uh, 100 pesos.
Ah, to 300? Oh, no. Uh, Honorable Apiado, ano, do amo-amo man rate nila sa ibang barangay, possibly?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, though nag-comparable sila sa ibang barangay, and, uh...
Upgrade sila para, okay.
To update because it's for a very long time nawala nila ma-update ilang, uh, ordinance for the, ordinance for the... Their previous ordinance was, uh, prior to this, uh, ordinance, 2016 pa, Mr. Chair, itong ilang ordinance, and it must be updated for, ano, 10, 10, ano, uh, every five years. It also underwent a public hearing. This was presented during their general assembly, and it was, uh, agreed by the body, by the General Public, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Sige. So, uh, there's a motion, duly seconded, uh, any objection? So, there being none, the... Uh, ordinance, uh, number two, series of 2004 of barangay Kenram, entitled an ordinance amending the imposition of fees for barangay clearances, certifications, and other miscellaneous services, uh, is hereby, uh, declared to be valid and consistent with law.
So, Your Honor, there are no more proposed measures on second reading, and we have already exhausted the items in the order of business. We are now on the unassigned business, Your Honor.
Unassigned business. Okay. Okay, any matter? Any member would like to raise, uh, an unassigned business? Hala na? Uh, yes, Honorable Apiado?
We would like to extend our greetings of Happy Women's Month to all our, uh, um, kababaihan, Mr. Chair, uh, to our, uh, secretary, to the Sanggunian, to all the staffs and members of the Sanggunian mga kababaihan, and, uh, thank you for, ano, for, uh, being an epitome of, ano, uh, women empowerment.
Okay, uh, so... Okay, we, the chair also extends the same, uh, uh, greetings and, uh, congratulations to all the women. Also to our women, uh, SB members. Um... So, okay. So, no more? So, session na dyan.